Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the regular county council meeting on Tuesday, June 10th. I see we have two councillors who are zooming in for the meeting. Councillor Capitania and Councillor Cromwell will be on the screen. And it is nine thirty. I would like to start with the land acknowledgements as we call this meeting to order. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty VI and Treaty VIII traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language and culture. The first item up is the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? And okay, and as per our procedural bylaw, we will go around the room for councillors to determine the items they wish to debate. So far, what I understand we will be debating is 2.1, 3.1, 5.1, 5.2, 6.2, 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, 8.1, 8.2, 8.4, 9.2, 11.1I, 11.1AA, and all closed session items 13.1 through 13.5. Is there anyone else who would like to bring forward any other items they would wish to debate? Councillor Hall?
8.3.
8.3.
And 6.3.
And 6.3. Okay. Is there anyone else?
Did you have 9.1A?
9.1A, no. We will add 9.1A. You're welcome. Is there anyone else? Okay. I think I would like to also add 6.1. And I believe that pretty much covers it. If there's nobody else, I'll go through this list again, checking the screen. All right, so what we have for discussion, 2.1, 3.1, 5.1, 5.2, 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 9.1A, 9.2, 11.1I and 11.1AA, as well as all closed session items 13.1 through 13.5. Is there a motion to? Deputy Reed Minz would like to approve the agenda as discussed. All those in favor, oh, sorry. The delegations 5.1 and 5.2? Would you like to add 8.5? Sure, we can add 8.5, sure. Absolutely. All righty, go ahead, Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I noticed that there was no follow-up discussion for the closed session presentation. Is one going to be required at today's meeting or will that be left for a future meeting?
5.2, like there's no 13 points for it?
Yeah. So I'm just wondering if that is required or not.
Being I don't know what the conversation will take place. Is, I'll leave that, defer that to the CAO. If you feel we need to have a follow-up discussion added to the agenda regarding 5.2's closed presentation or discussion.
Madam Chairman, this is the waterline update and I assume some discussion will happen during that delegation.
Okay.
I, if you need to discuss it again later, you could, you could vote to add it to the agenda at that time.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that's satisfactory for you, Councillor Anderson, yes? Okay. All right, so I believe it was Deputy Reed Minz who had that motion to approve the agenda as discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? You're in favor, okay, thank you, nine and zero. Alrighty, the first item we have up is to discuss and go through is our public hearing 3.1. So we'll go right into that. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending the public hearing for bylaw 0132025. I'm Tracy Holland Reeve for Athabasca County and I will be the Chair of the hearing. This hearing is being held to discuss the redistricting of Block D Plan 403 ET within southwest 156522 west of the fourth in the hamlet of Collington from Light Industrial M1 District to Hamlet Residential AR District. On behalf of council, I would like to welcome you here today. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment for introductions. So beginning with council on my right.
Morning, Rob Minz, Division 8, Uptown Lake Area.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, Division 1, Rochester, Paverlaria.
Morning, Camille Wallach, Division 9, North of the River.
Kelly Chamsick, Division 7, Atmore, Brassline, Crossfield areas.
Brian Hall, I live in Division 4.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division 3, which is the Boyle-Caslin area.
And those councillors on Zoom, if you'd like to go ahead, please. Councillor Capitania?
Good morning, Natasha Capitania for Division 2.
And Councillor Cromwell?
Good morning, Gary Cromwell, Division 6, the far north of the county, Uptown, including the Wandering River area.
Thank you. The Secretary of the Public Hearing is Bob Beck, who is the CAO for Athabasca County. Also joining us from administration is Recording Secretary Leah Blair, Communications Manager Jordan Schenkelberg and Land Management Specialist Diane Clucy. Any persons who have joined the meeting in person or via Zoom and wish to be heard should please give your full name now. Alrighty, the public hearing for bylaw 0132025 is now open. I will now turn the floor over to Secretary Bob Beck.
The purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council of the County to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters and all comments must be directed to council through the chairperson. Only one person may speak at a time and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be: A, Land Management Specialist Diane Clucy will speak first to outline the background and provide an explanation of the bylaw. B, Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. C, Ms. Clucy will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. D, Councillors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. E, Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information received at the public hearing. F, Council will only consider matters raised at the hearing. G, Only councillors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the Chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation and the Chair will only ask the question if the Chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
Thank you, CAO Beck. Before hearing from the public, I would ask Ms. Clucy to provide background and explanation of the proposed bylaw, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Bylaw 13-2025 was granted first reading on May 13th, 2025. The purpose of the bylaw is to rezone Block D Plan 403 ET from Light Industrial District to Hamlet Residential District. Lot D is located within southwest 156522 west of the fourth, which is in the hamlet of Collington. Adjacent landowners within 50 meters were sent notices via regular mail on May 13th and a total of four adjacent landowners received those mailouts. In addition, notices were mailed to agencies who may be affected by the proposed rezoning on May 13th. Alberta Forestry and Parks had no concerns. Apex Utilities had no concerns. Fortis Alberta had no concerns. Tele's Communications had no concerns and we received an out-of-office with no further response from Alberta Transportation. Alberta Health Services and RCB were also provided notices, but we did not receive any correspondence back from them. The file was advertised in the May 27th and June 3rd additions of the Town and Country This Week Advocate Newspaper, as well as placed on our website.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions or points of clarification they wouldn't wish to ask Ms. Clucy? Alrighty. Ms. Clucy, are there any written materials that have been submitted?
None, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will now call upon those wishing to speak. Are there anyone available for a verbal presentation? If you would like to come forward, please. Thank you. And we will ask you to speak into the microphone and if you'll need to please provide your full name for the record, please. Speak.
For those who didn't hear me, I'm the owner of 43 ET in Collington.
May we have your name, please?
My name is Lou Copay. And we're here basically as auditors. And if there are any questions, we're here to answer them. But I think everything is fairly straightforward from what we gathered till now. And I can leave the conversation to end right now and we'll just listen in.
Okay.
We appreciate being in the presence of your folks here, most of you I know. But how are you? If there are any questions over and above what we've covered here so far, I'll just sing out and I'll help you out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions? Just looking on the screen for any hands up. Oh, Councillor Capitania?
Thank you very much, I was hitting the wrong button. I don't specifically have any questions, but I want to thank Mr. Copay for coming in and taking the time just in case we did have any. So thanks for joining us, Lou.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. I will ask one more time, is there anyone else from the public that has not spoken and wishes to speak? Does the applicant wish to make any closing comments? Alrighty, at this time, does council have any additional questions? Last chance of any speaker or of staff? All right, does anyone feel that they have not been fairly heard? There being no further testimony, I will close the public hearing. I further advise council cannot receive any further information on this matter. Thank you for attending the public hearing. I declare the public hearing closed at 9:43 AM. Thank you for taking the time to join us this morning and we will now resume our regular county council meeting. The next item up on the agenda is 5.1, which would be a delegation at 10 AM and that's a little bit of time away. So we will move forward to item 6.1 on page 18 of your agenda package. And we'll get there. This is the, item is the North Skeleton Lake Community Association. Does administration wish to speak on the report? No, okay, thank you. The recommendation here is that council direct administration to provide approval to the North Skeleton Lake Community Association to install a solar light with installation and maintenance costs to be paid for by the North Skeleton Lake Community Association. Councillor Anderson?
I'd like to move the recommend motion, please.
Okay, Councillor Anderson would like to move the recommended motion. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Councillor Hall.
Just on this one, I'd like a recorded vote.
Okay, Councillor Hall has requested a recorded vote. Councillor Minz?
Just through the chaired administration, did, did we happen to receive anything regarding running a powered light down there? What it would, what it would cost?
Yes, Madam Chair, I did receive a quote from, from Fortis Alberta. The cost to run the line, because the line has to come a fair distance, was in excess of 30,000. Thirty.
Okay. Perfect, thank you, thank you very much.
That's excessive, is right. So I do also have a question, if I may, with regards to this particular project. Is there absolutely any need for an agreement? That we need to have in place for this, as we do with most? That we've been discussing lately, are agreements are required? Or does the motion cover it?
Madam Chair, I'll answer this with a question, agreement for what?
For the, the lights, so we have a community group who's coming in and installing a light on municipal property. So it does mention in the motion that they are responsible for the installation and maintenance and to be paid by the group. Is an agreement required or is the motion good enough for that? And if they, if they, I guess more than anything, if the group dissolves, do we take ownership of the light?
In a strictly legal sense, I think as soon as the infrastructure is put in our road right away, it becomes our infrastructure. Unless we've got an agreement to lease it back to somebody, I think it becomes our infrastructure, Madam Chair.
Okay, so this motion then will cover the, will cover the installation, maintenance costs be covered by this group, but should they dissolve, then we end up owning it. I just want to make that clear. And then we would end up dealing with that maintenance or taking it down. So I just want to, just wanted to confirm that for my, myself. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Councillor Chamsick.
Just wondering if this is, you know, I think we've kind of touched on it before, both level of service, if we're going to be looking at this with other day use areas as well.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, there is a recorded vote. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor? We have Councillor Anderson. Councillor Capitania, Councillor Anderson, Councillor Hall, Councillor Wallach, Councillor Gerlock.
Councillor Cromwell in favor.
In favor, Councillor Cromwell is in favor. All those opposed? Councillor Minz, Councillor Holland and Councillor Chamsick. Passes six to three, thank you. And item 6.2 is a reconsideration of CC25299 on page 20 of your agenda. So before we can discuss, according to our procedural bylaw, no discussion can take place until the motion for reconsideration has passed with two-thirds vote. So if then we can put the motion on the floor to reconsider this item, which I believe is CC25299, we'll go ahead with that vote. We require two-thirds, which we need six. So all those in favor to reconsider CC25299?
Aye.
One, two, three, four. And those opposed?
Aye.
Four, five. That reconsideration fails. However.
Madam Chair, could we just get clarification, who made that motion? Which member of council made that motion?
Oh, I guess I just went about it.
It would be me. I'd be happy to move.
Councillor Hall, thank you.
Councillor Hall, thank you, would be happy to move that. Being that, with regards to this item, being that the date in the.
As a point of order, the item is concluded, I, there's no other items on the agenda here. Motion failed, we need to move on.
Thank you. I believe and I will double check through procedural with CAO that being that the reconsideration did not go forward, that we can always do an amending motion for the date, being the date has passed in the motion. And that would mean that we would change from May 31st to a new date. So just wondering, when I look through different procedures and whatnot, I determined that we could make an amendment motion, but I would defer that to CAO.
I don't know, Madam Chair, I'd have to take that away and review it, I don't have that answer for you right now.
Okay. Well, in this situation, I guess we can put a notice of motion on the floor and discuss this at our next meeting. That there will be an amending motion for the date from May 31st to a new date and we'll discuss that on June 26th at the notice of motion.
As a point of order, I think you, to open the motion up again, you still need a reconsideration.
For an amending motion, I don't believe so, but we can, we'll discuss that on the 26th.
So just for clarity then, would that mean we could make an amending motion to delete certain words from the motion then too? Like, I don't understand how we're moving the procedural bylaw to suit. Either we're going to open it up for discussion or we're not, we just chose not to.
Thank you. All right, next item up is 6.3 Draft Policy 9005, page 22 of your agenda. And I see we have Fire Chief Shalpe here. We have a recommendation that council adopts policy 9005, fire department membership effective July 1, 2025, and rescinds policy 9000, 9001, 9108 and 9120. And if you would like to discuss your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so this is kind of a, a biggie in terms of the fire services review and master plan. This is something we've been working towards for the last couple of years. Again, part of council strategic plan to move towards the paid-on-call model. So for us, appreciate being able to bring it straight to council today. This is something that we do have a little bit of a time factor on coming into summer here. This would ultimately provide for our members a greater recognition through, through compensation. So as we move forward with regionalization and trying to formalize the fire service here in the county, we are asking our volunteers to give more. And let, let's, let's be frank, it's not fair to ask for more without giving something in kind. We're, we're operating on the backs of folks that are doing this for free, in some cases losing income to provide this. So for us, the paid-on-call is a natural evolution in the fire service. All of our surrounding neighbors have gone this route. We are actually the minority in the province in terms of having a program such as this. So this policy 9005, again, lumps together elements from the previous four policies into a singular policy. It navigates through the labor regulations that do come along with this because once you get into compensation of folks, you go from a quasi-employee to a employee. So we've navigated that through. Our district fire departments have had significant input into this in the elements where they can, specifically the membership requirements, maintaining membership. And I'm actually, we've had some really healthy conversations around that between different departments because some of our departments felt that our, our minimum requirements are way too low. But for us, looking at the region as a whole, we can't, we can't hurt ourselves just to aspire to do better. So we, you know, we've set a very, a very low level of requirement, but just to make sure that we have something there. Really, I, I look to council for any, any questions on this. It's, it's big and there's a lot to it and I could ramble here all day.
Thank you so very much, Councillor Hall.
Good morning. I appreciate your effort on this through the Chair to the Chief and I like that this is clearly about Athabasca County departments. I have a, a number of kind of questions going through about sort of grammar and structure that I just wanted to get sequentially if, with the consent of the Chair. So the, when we talk about minimum pay period and it talks about report to work or come to work, I wonder if that should reflect for Athabasca County Fire Service? Because when you say come to work, what does that actually mean? But if you say when you're coming to work for the fire service, that clarifies that it's the pay that you would get by being here, not the pay that you'd get by working somewhere else.
May I ask what page you are?
The definition of minimum pay period on page 24.
Thank you.
Moving on to page 25, under standard operating procedures, I wondered if it would be enhanced by adding at the end of the sentence the words of Athabasca County. The same with volunteer member, is a member of the fire service not employed or salaried in seasonal capacity with Athabasca County? On page 26, under the very top of the page, Part B, double I, candidates with other offenses, I think is, other is a more appropriate word than minor because I don't know what minor offenses are, but I think any other offense should be at the discretion of the, the, the team that you've selected in the, in the report here. As it relates to 5.1.5 at the bottom of that page, procedurally, is there a process where, to make this easier to volunteers, that could just be done by the county on their behalf? Like, could they sign an authorization and you could just administratively do it?
Through the chaired councillor hall, this is something we're working on with our FOIP coordinator right now. Usually when you, we sign the release, the release is a one-time request. Other municipalities have navigated this and we're, we're working on this as well, but it's, it's, it's a little bit muddy when it gets into FOIP.
Okay, and just thinking about, you know, how much administrative hassle do we create for the volunteers? Nobody likes filling out forms. I, page 27, 5.1.9, I would offer to you that the language and shall return and acknowledgement of the same could be added. I don't think it's enough to send them a letter. I think having someone return a note saying I acknowledge receiving and have read is important, very much in the way that happens in other places. If you look at page 28, 5.2.2, in addition to any other compensation noted in this policy, the, the county volunteer members in good standing are eligible for volunteer member years of service programs as established by the county. When, when you use language that is, you know, we will do eventually, as soon as you've done it, this line becomes out of date. So I, I think you could enhance the, the language by just saying, you know, the, the volunteer, the county volunteer members in good standing are eligible for the volunteer members' years of service program as established. The same follows for 5.2.4, the voluntary fighter fighters tax credit or successor programs. We know there's lots of fluctuating ability for the federal and provincial governments to move programs around. So it'd be nice to kind of tie that to, to a moving target if they, if they change the program. And this is maybe just the way I read things and write, but on page 29, 5.3.5, Part A, we're talks about the county's usual payroll practices. I don't think the word usual is useful, it's a wiggle word. Do we have unusual payroll practices? I don't think, you know, we might, but I haven't experienced them and so I don't think you need that. When I was forward on page 31 at 5.3.12A, should be placed on the county's account, we're able and authorized. So I think at some level you want to authorize that. Under page 32, under that same heading, Part C, the, the, the language I think is awkward, or at least the way I read it was when I went over it a couple of times. the 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 language I think is awkward, or at least the way I read it was when I went over it a couple times. The second sentence uh that are not pre-approved or are expenses that the county deems other otherwise deems necessary for the member. Um, so this is talking about the county retaining the right to refuse or reimburse expenses that are necessary. I wondered if that should have been unnecessary. And then if you look at five point four point one, um attendance at at least would be better or preferably the language not less than one. I think is is more clear because you don't double up words which are tongue twisters. There's you need a colon on five point four point three A. Uh, five point four point four members on ah leave of absence, I think. None of these are crazy. And then five point five point one, it's again policy four six five five or successor policies. I would add the words are successor policies. And that's it, but none of, for me, none of those actually are change the spirit of what you're doing. I'd be happy to move the policy um with little corrections, if you thought they were were worth. And would be happy also to take the advice of uh the chief or the C A O on any of those.
Did you get all of those? I sure didn't. It was very fast. I was trying to write as many of them as I could down, but I did not.
Uh, Madam Chair, I caught most of them. I think I missed the very last one, but I will review the recording after and and go through.
And um, as you mentioned, this isn't changing. The meaning of anything is just correcting what you feel should be more clear. Yes. Okay, but there's quite a few changes. I don't know if everybody else is comfortable um with all of the changes and and understanding exactly how they impact. Where's counsel at with that? I'm comfortable. Sorry, you're comfortable. Thank you. Okay.
The only one that was really important to me that I had noted prior to the meeting. I tried to get them all down as fast as I could do, but somebody does need to slow down with it. Um, five is was the one on page thirty two, under five point three point one two. See, um, the county retains discretion to refuse to reimburse any expenses that are not pre-approved or are expenses that the county otherwise deems. I do think that needs to be unnecessary, otherwise it pretty much renders that clause useless. Um, but overall, kudos to administration. I think this uh, policy aligns very well with council's strategic intent and the way that we've been talking about moving with the fire services. So, great job.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to have a? A kick, Counselor Chamsik?
Um, in here, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find my notes. I did have a question about um here, I'm just trying to find where it talked about uh reimbursements and whatnot. And how would that affect with our green light policies with uh, do members have to have two million liability?
Through the chair to Counselor Chamsik, uh, no, because that would be a personal use item. So as for the green light policy, you would be doing that at your own discretion, at your own risk. Therefore, there'd be no insurance requirements on that. That would be the member's own risk, whether they're paid on call or or not.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? I have a question. Um, on page twenty six, five point one point three. Um, that eligible candidate candidates who meet the basic membership will be interviewed by the district chief and the A C F S administration to determine suitability for a position. So I'm just curious, um would H R be involved at all with regards to this, or is that is a totally separate entity, I guess?
Reeve Holland, in in this case, uh, H R would likely be part of that conversation as well, just to make sure that uh we're treating people equitably and fair, that it's not, uh, there's no discriminatory activities happening there as well. Um I don't feel that that would be an issue, but H R being present does provide that level of protection for the candidate coming in as well, that there's no pre-existing issues that could potentially sway that that interview.
Okay, so is that something that would be needed to be mentioned in this paragraph that human resources would also be included? No. Okay, so that's just a given. Okay, thank that. Fantastic. Um, I do have a couple more questions, just it's just with regards to the span of the, uh, this is on still page twenty six, five point one four and five five point one five. Um, the three years, is three years a norm or is something that can be shortened or what what felt, how did you arrive at three years?
Uh, Madam Chair, so we, again, consulting our neighbors around us, three years seems to be the common kind of industry best practice. If you look at the language as well, though, there is that at a minimum of every three years. Um, that was consulted with legal as well. So if there's a situation where we feel that we need to do an update sooner than, we do with have legal right to do that as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um or I and I was confused about something and and I was hoping you could clarify it for me. Five point one six, where direct billing is unavailable. Athabasca County shall reimburse all members and candidates for costs incurred under section five point one of this policy. What does that mean?
So if a candidate has to go and get a medical uh note from a doctor and there's a be incurred, most of the doctors' offices aren't going to direct bill Athabasca County, so initially the member would have to eat that cost. And then we 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 would be reimbursing for that, whether they're successful or not.
Awesome. Great, thank you. Um I think that was all my question. Oh, I did have another question, actually. Um and I was looking for, it mentions on page thirty one, uh, and I don't sure if if Counselor Hall uh caught this one, um, because it went by pretty fast, but five point three point one one C. It says meals provided where uh meals provided during instant response shall not exceed allowances identified as identified in five point three point nine point one. And I was looking for five point three point nine point one, and I couldn't find it. So I was just wondering if that if that's.
Madam Chair, I'll 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 bet that that's going to be a throwback from a previous version before legal went through it, so uh we'll have to amend that as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um and is policy twenty eleven for meals and expenses for staff and county at large, um, county members at large? Is that something that is based on this as well, or we're just strictly looking at policy two thousand nine, the elected officials policy for uh meal um amounts?
In consultation with H R, we went with policy two thousand nine, sticking with that one solely for this one.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Um, and again, yes, it's a huge amount of work that's gone into this. Greatly appreciated, and uh I look forward to seeing how it plays out. Does uh Counselor Hall?
I think that probably should be referring to five point three point one one A. Your your last question or on part C?
Under the meals? Yeah, five point three point, five point three point nine point one one A. Okay. There's a lot of, it's a big handle there. Is there anybody else that uh has anything further to bring to the table? Alrighty, um, if there's no further discussion. Would counsel like to go ahead? Is there someone who would like to give the recommended motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that altogether. I think we're ready. Are we, or is there any further discussion? The motion will be the recommended motion. Counselor Hall uh has asked for the recommended motion that council adopt policy nine zero zero five. Fire department membership effective July one, twenty twenty five, and rescinds policies nine thousand, nine thousand one, ninety one oh eight and ninety one twenty.
Subject to the amendments I mentioned.
Subject to.
Or as amended or whatever.
Okay, I would think as amended is a little easier. Now, one last question for counsel. Are are you all comfortable with the amendments that were placed here today? Or would you like to see this come back to uh have a reread?
Is administration comfortable through the chair to administration? Are you comfortable with ma- changing these amendments and then moving it forward or maybe some of them you don't agree with?
Through the chair to counselor, Minz, I have no concerns with the amendments per brought forward by Counselor Hall. They uh, they all make sense. And uh, again, he caught a ver- he caught a couple uh Reeve Holland and and Counselor both caught it very important little fixes for us, so.
So all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Alrighty, and I'm sorry we went past our ten o'clock for our delegation. So if we're ready for the um for the vote, everybody's ready to go? Ready to go? All right, on that recommended motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Counselor Cromwell, are you there?
Yep, in favor.
In favor. So I believe there were no opposed, so that passes nine and oh. And we have a delegation for the annual plan Athabasca District Chamber of Commerce at ten A M. If we would just like to take a couple of minutes, are they here? Yes, they're here. We'd like to just take a couple of minutes while they are seated, please. Thank you. Uh, I apologize for being a little past ten that uh before we brought you forward. Um, we have with us here this morning, our delegation, which is five point one, the annual plan, Athabasca District Chamber of Commerce is with us. And if we would like to start with introductions with counsel, on my right.
Morning, uh, Rob Minz, uh, Division Eight, Southeast Lake, Lake Area.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, Rochester Parish, Valeria.
Good morning, Camille Wallach, Division Nine, North of the River.
Kelly Chamsik, Grassland, Posveda, Atmore Areas.
Brian Hall, I reside in Division Four.
Ashen Anderson, I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle-Caslin area.
And we have two counselors are joining us on Zoom. You'll see them on the screen, but go ahead, please, Counselor Capitanic.
Uh, good morning, Natasha Capitanic for Division Two, Collins in New Brook. Uh, sorry, New Pine Creek, Collins in New Pine Creek in Menook.
Thank you, uh, Counselor.
Good morning, Gary Cromwell, Division Six, far north, up and including wandering river. Thank you for being here today.
And thank you. Thank you so much for being here and welcome. I'm Tracy Holland, Reeve of Athabasca County, and Counselor for Division Division Five, which is east of Athabasca. We also have our communications manager, Jordan Schenkelberg, our recording secretary, Ms. Leah Blair. I'm not sure if we have someone else joining us via Zoom. We also have C A O Beck. And behind you, we have our press, uh, Cole Brennan. And do we have someone else on Zoom? Okay, thank you very much. So if you'd like to please introduce yourselves and and go ahead and use your microphone. There's a button there to turn it on. You'll see it turn red at the top.
I'm Marika Namath from the just uh Athabasca District Chamber of Commerce, and I'm the president.
And Brenda Skamen from the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Vice President.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Okay, um, good morning. Thank you for taking the time in your schedules today to listen to what we have planned on behalf of the chamber um, for the next probably six, seven months. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the consideration for the donation um for the fireworks. To the grant program that uh took place. So my name's Brenda Skamen. Um, I've been with the chamber for a number of years. I took a break for a while and then the chamber was struggling the last year um to form the committee. And so I decided to come back to have some continuity on the chamber and to get them going again. Um, so we're basically working on bare bones on our executive right now, and the first thing we did is we want to know what what do our members want? And then once we found, we pulled our members, we wanted to make sure that um we didn't overtake and what we're going to do for the year for the amount of people that we had volunteering. So we as a committee decided um to set some priorities and we really wanted to um network with uh, the town and the county and the egg society specifically to get our information out of what our plans are for the next year and see if we could collaborate somehow with those organizations. And so we're not duplicating the same things, and maybe we're advertising for you and you're sort of sharing our information and what we're doing too. So I'm just going to give you a quick um outline of what we're doing for the next year. So this Wednesday, we have a general meeting and we're um the university governing chamber councils at seven P M. And we're having a guest speaker there and we're focusing on um, that presentation for a guest speaker, we're focusing on uh the coverage for businesses in emergency and evacuation situations. We're ongoing, working with um the Alberta Red Cross on the program that they have going right now, and we want to, I'll talk to the county rep regarding that. And the it's about emergency preparedness, that the Red Cross is really pushing out, and they have different surveys and different um, things that you can do, evaluations, that to see if your business is ready. And it was basically after the last set of fires that they were looking at doing this type of thing. Candidate date, we have the parade starting at ten thirty on um July the first downtown. And then the evening fireworks, we're working in partnership with the Riverats. And thanks to our sponsors, the town of Athabasca and the county for sponsoring that event. Um, July eleventh to thirteenth, the Wild Rose Carnival is coming into town, and this is one of our actually fundraisers that we do with the chamber um and to bring some entertainment to Athabasca. Communities in Bloom is something that the chamber has been sponsoring for years. And this is coming July twenty seventh to the twenty ninth. We're we're welcoming judges um in on the twenty seventh, they're doing a community dinner. And they're, the theme this year is called Edible Garden. And the the chamber is basically um working along with the committee that we have formed uh, to advocate for Athabasca and the beautiful communities that we have. And then on the twenty eighth, they tour around with the judges in the region and the town, and they evaluate our whole community. Um, we're all for the municipal elections. This may be of interest to some of you. Um, previously, what we, the chamber did was we had did an all candidates forum. And we're looking at doing that this year is October the first and second at the governing um council again at the university for both the town and county candidates that will be running. We're going to do the platform for two different sessions. One will be for the town um council members that are running and one is going to be for the county. Um, so the, this year because of the election, our annual um mayor reef meet and greet type of breakfast. We're going to do that in November because we're going to have elections in October, right? So we'll have the new mayor and and new reef. And so that is our plans for the year so far. That takes us up to November.
Thank you very much. Um, appreciate that. Would you like to go ahead? Anything to add? Okay. We appreciate all the information. We're so glad, happy to see you're functioning and up and running and and doing all these great things for the community. That's awesome. Um, I noticed you mentioned the Red Cross and and you're doing some work with them. And just for some awareness, um, they're also doing, the Red Cross is doing an N ninety five mask distribution uh, with different organizations and whatnot. It's on their website. Um, and those N ninety five masks are far free. And so you're able to uh request, um, and they, if they have some still available, they're able to help you out with that. So that's something you're interested in there. Um, just thought it was a really neat program. Um, is there anyone who would like to have any comments, questions for our presenters? Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Thank you for coming. Again, um I'm just wondering if you can share your thoughts on how the chamber can be an advocate for regional business interests with all government?
Do you just want to repeat the end because it got that beat?
Just curious about the view of the Chamber on how how the Chamber can be an advocate for regional business, business interests among all levels of government?
What we really wanted to do was starting to, and then this may address your issue, or this may be something that we may have to bring back and have more discussion with it. We really wanted to start working with the businesses in the Chamber and the the local levels of government that we have right here, and maybe doing some mixers, some, some, some situations where we could get everybody together at more of an informal level to start having some discussions of what the issues are locally and what's going on, because we don't have that kind of opportunity. We either have, you know, election time, or there's an issue, let's address it right now, right? So not more of a proactive approach. So that was one thing when we pulled our members, that was one thing we were looking at is how how can we get more proactive with them? And how can we get the conversation happening at more like informal levels where people will feel more comfortable talking? Does that sort of address it?
Thank you. In follow-up to your comment, I would add, you know, you said a couple of times you've pulled your members. You may find value in pulling the people who are not members and understand why, why they're not. Because there's been some changes over time and 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 they'll there's, there's an opportunity to grow there too. There's lots of, lots of amazing opportunities and and chambers can be very exciting, and so I'm, I'm glad that there's a group that stepped up to rekindle that flame. It's good for our community and our region, and thank you for, for tackling that heavy burden.
Can I just follow up on that? Because that, that was another thing. We want to, that was our first goal to pull our members and then pull ones that aren't our members. And why aren't you our members? And what do you want? Or what do you see the Chamber as being in order for you to be a member? Right? Because yeah, we, we do know that there's been, there's been a lot of difficulty, I think, with different organizations over the years, and change is, is not always an easy thing for people. And I think this, this Chamber group is a change. We have two people that just moved to Athabasca that are on our Chamber, like just brand new to Athabasca. But she's a president of the Chamber now. Right? So we wanted to go in there with some, like a clean slate saying, okay, exactly. What, what do we want to do? What do our members want us to do? What does the public want us to do? We can't do everything. But let's, let's focus on what the wants are and prioritize those and then work from there.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for our presenters from the Chamber? Counselor Cromwell or Counselor Capitanic? I don't see any hands up. So I think that wraps up our gathering here this morning. Thank you so much again for being here, and I look forward to seeing what's going to be coming, coming out from the Chamber. That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Can we stay if we want to stay for a bit?
Absolutely.
Okay, yes. Do you want us to move back?
You bet. That would be great. Thank you so much. I think we're going to take a recess at this time until our next presenter comes out at ten thirty. I'm sorry, it is, oh, pardon me, it is a closed session, so we will have to ask you to leave during that time. Thank you for the reminder there. Appreciate it, but I think we'll go into recess at this time until our next presenter, ten thirty. Thank you. Thank you so much. Council has returned from recess and are in closed session. We have joining, I see. Closed session, sorry, did I say in? Pardon me. Sorry, sorry. Panic has ensued. Sort, yeah, we're out. We did a motion. Yeah, yeah. Counselor Chamsik moved it, yeah, Counselor Chamsik moved it, yeah. You did. All right, everybody, we're back. We're, we're, we're getting it all together here this morning. I see that Counselor Cromwell has returned to Zoom, and with us, we have, joining with us this morning is Melanie McConnell, Policy and Governance Specialist. And Director Amlee has also joined us. We are at seven point one of our agenda, which is on page forty-one of your package. And we are at bylaw zero one two dash twenty twenty-five, the procedural bylaw amendment for electronic meetings. You would like to?
No, I, I would move the the amendment on page forty-three, that the bylaw be amended to delete, before we move the actual bylaw, be amended to delete sixteen point four B, which reads a member may attend regular council meeting remotely no more than six times unless council approves additional and further the subsequent clauses be relettered accordingly.
I'm sorry, you would like to move that? You would like to move that? That we have, there's no concern to authorize remote participation only up to six times per year? Is that, you're moving to accept that as information? I'm sorry.
No, I said I would move that amendment to the bylaw twelve twenty-five be amended to delete clause sixteen point four B in the way it's presented on page forty-three of your agenda.
Forty-three of our agenda to remove that, okay. Forty-three of our agenda, to remove that, okay. Which is page forty-three of the agenda, and I'm just trying to find the clause here, must hear, may hear, um, just trying to find it. Okay, so you're, you're under the options, council may consider amendments to bylaw zero one two twenty twenty to second or third reading should council decide to remove the limits or remote participation. A motion prior to further readings could be that bylaw zero one two twenty twenty-five be amended to delete clause sixteen point four B. Which reads, a member may attend a regular council meeting remotely, no more than six times a year unless council approves additional. And unless extenuating circumstances require additional remote attendance. And further that the subsequent clauses be relettered accordingly. That's what you're looking to do? Okay. So that is Counselor Hall's. Would, this would be an amendment to the bylaw? Uh, zero one two twenty twenty, alright. I think first of all, would you like to speak on the report at all?
Madam Chair, members of council, thank you. I was instructed, or pardon me, administration was instructed at the last meeting to obtain legal opinion. So following first reading, we reached out to council, or to the county's lawyers, and they have advised that, given that electronic meetings are not mandatory. There is discretion with council imposing any sort of limitations or having no limitations whatsoever. So that is why in the options section, there is a motion, should council consider it as a policy change, but it's entirely up to council, given the advice from legal.
Okay.
And as noted in the report as well, there are further changes coming with respect up to bill fifty and what that's going to look like for procedural bylaws in the future.
I think though, the question last time was specifically, is it legal to restrict attendance? And I wasn't sure of the answer to that.
Madam Chair and members of council, yes, the lawyers has, have indicated that council could impose restrictions on attendance virtually. They can impose limitations on how many times a member may participate. That was the advice, given that there is flexibility in the legislation. Electronic meetings and electronic participation is a discretion for council and council can impose limitations.
Yes, thank you. That, that's what I read in the report as well, that it is no concern to authorize remote participation only up to six times per year. But it does mention further legal council has confirmed that they take a view that bill fifty, which repealed codes of conduct, should not extend to dictating how counselors can attend or not attend meetings. So that one kind of confused me a little bit. If, if we could get a bit more clarity on that one, please, and thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. When we reached out to legal council, we did confirm whether or not, because bill fifty has a clause that says councils cannot have any bylaws or resolutions. That, pardon me, what is the exact wording, addresses the behavior or conduct of counselors or of members of council committees. We wanted to confirm that in any way would imposing this restriction be construed to be any type of regulation of behavior? And the lawyers has said, no, that that should not be applied to procedural bylaws.
Okay, so if we, if I have it correctly, just for confirmation, if we go ahead and say, no, we would like six, limit six times, and somebody goes past that. There is no recourse for that, for a council to come back and say, no, thou shall, it's against the council code of conduct.
Wait, Madam Chair and members of council, the lawyer has indicated that it is within council's right to impose on your procedural bylaw. Now, I couldn't speak to if something were to ever go to courts and what that might play out, but that is the advice from our legal council.
Okay, so I guess I basically am, if I'm understanding it correctly, then that even if we do limit it, there is, for me, if I understand that, there's no recourse. So, um, is there any point in having it in the bylaw? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'm in favor of removing that clause from the bylaw. I think that participation is important. Also, I kind of, in rereading the bylaw, and I got to questioning the implications of, I mean, if you exceeded it, whatnot. We also weren't clear in the original bylaw if it meant you had to attend the meeting via Zoom in its entirety. Or if you showed up for part of the meeting in person and then had to leave and attended via Zoom, if that counted as one of those times. And I just don't think that we had it thorough enough to really be viable in the bylaw. So I think we should delete it and, and future councils find an issue, or if bill fifty doesn't address it, then further action can be taken at a later time.
Thank you. And in, in follow-up, what, to what Counselor Anderson was saying, does it, if we choose, like you mentioned, if a further council chooses, if we choose, further council chooses. Does it need to be in a bylaw, or can it be a policy with regards to remote participation? Does it need to be part of a procedure for council? To be a policy?
For which?
For remote participation and our rules around it.
Uh, we'd have to go back and, and, and check with the lawyer, but I think it would have to be part of the procedural bylaw. You can't just defer to a policy.
Okay. Nope, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of council, so unless there's any further impositions from the minister and the orders, the MGA does say by bylaw, the procedures are established, so.
Thank you, thank you very much. Alright. Turn my microphone. I think we need to address the amendment that Counselor Hall would like to make.
And I guess for clarity, it, it wouldn't be an amendment, it's a motion to amend.
A motion to amend the bylaw, pardon me, yes. Oh, thank you. I didn't see, sorry, go ahead, please. Thank you.
No, that's okay. Um, so I, I've been listening very intently, and so what I just want to clarify is that if we put this into, if this goes into a procedural bylaw. And there is no repercussion that if a person goes on Zoom for the seventh time that year, for example, um, would they just be not let in the room, the Zoom meeting? Or would it just be best to just never attend? I'm, I'm curious how the seventh time would be squashed, I guess. Would that be at the discretion of Mr. Schenkelberg? No disrespect. Like, would that be putting a pressure on him to say, I can't let this counselor in, in the room because they've had six meetings?
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll take a stab at this because I think we're into new territory when the province rescinded a code of conduct. Um, now we, nobody knows what the rules are. Um, you know, I, I think if council was insisted that you had X amount of meetings, whatever that number is, or, or you, or you didn't have it. And if a member of council wasn't obeying the procedural bylaw, even if council chose not to do something about it. I would be concerned that a member of the public still has the right to challenge council, and for some reason, it's someone that doesn't like you, and they decide to take you to court to get you disqualified from council. I would be concerned about that. So the answer of, are there any repercussions? We don't know. Because honestly, we didn't research it, because we didn't anticipate this amendment coming up today. So if we'd known about it, we could have researched that part of it, but we didn't. So are there still repercussions that could happen? Possibly. We don't know that, and we're into new uncharted territory because of the bill fifty.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Um, I think maybe we just wanna, for me, it's thinking about, you know, what's really council's role and what are we trying to do? Um, you know, we're, we're all independently elected here to represent the best decisions we can on behalf of the county and to speak for the residents in our district. And I think the important thing is that everybody is here to do the jobs in the best way they can. And so I, I think it's really not up to council to, to get into telling you that, you know, you have to wear a tie to the meeting, or you have to have a long-sleeved shirt, or you have to show up in person. Like, what, what to me is really relevant is participation in a meaningful way. And so if, because of whatever circumstances, a couple of counselors need to attend via Zoom, but the participation is meaningful. In my view, and I, I think, you know, most rate, many ratepayers would agree that that's more valuable than just showing up and never putting your view forward or never saying anything. And so if we're here to do the job in the best way we can, um, I'm gonna say it's not, council's kind of treading outside of our collective lane by trying to manage the independence of, of the other. And then also, really, the real test is ratepayers. We, we get challenged every four years. Uh, if you, if, if the circumstance arose, if someone never set foot in the room, that would be unfortunate for all of us. But, um, you know, they, they would be accountable to that, to the ratepayers at the election, and certainly before that, through the recall legislation in the, in the thirty-six months that that's open. And I think there's a number of other questions that aren't addressed by the bylaw. It's not, the way it exists now. As, you know, has been previously mentioned, what are the consequences, if any? And then how do you count partial attendance? If you're here for part of the meeting and part by Zoom, well, is that, is, is that one of your six? Or is it half of your six? Like, it, there, there are moments for very good reason. Counselors are here for part of a meeting, and then because of other commitments have to leave. Um, but still participate in a meaningful way. I don't find that less valuable as a, as a colleague at the table than when they're sitting at the table. Given that they, you know, there tends to be meaningful participation along the way. So I, I think we just clean it up and take away an opportunity to create problems by, by deleting this. And stay in our lane and, and work collectively to build an environment where everybody actually wants to be in the room. And we'll do their best to be here, but, but also let's accept that for various reasons, sometimes folks can't be here and can still participate in a meaningful way.
Thank you. Counselor Cromwell, and then Counselor Kapitania.
Well, thank you very much. I agree quite well with Counselor Hall, and he took a lot of the words out that I wanted to say. I think it was unfair and inappropriate to limit participation. We have to realize that things do come up and people are able to be a valued participant from even remotely if required. Uh, poison, point in case to date, uh, we have two members away, but we are actively involved and still working for the betterment of our community. So I completely agree.
Thank you, Counselor Kapitania.
I'm sorry, coming in late. I was gonna just follow up, but, uh, so I, I didn't express clearly, I guess. My follow-up was, uh, why I agree with taking this, um, portion out is who is responsible for keeping it to six, and that my example was, I don't think it should be put on administration to police how many meetings we've had and let us, let someone, I'll use myself as an example. If I, this was my sixth meeting and I come in at seven. It should be no one's job to have the pressure of saying, I can't come in the room. I'll use myself as the example. So, um, that's why I wanted to follow up with that question, why I asked it. Because I don't think that it is, um, uh, I don't think it's possible to put that pressure on anyone to keep track and remind someone of where they're at. Or allow them into a meeting or not. So I would definitely vote to take that out.
Thank you. Um, I think I'll add a little something as well. In, what's come to light for me this morning is that we've entered in, we've set up a situation where we're going to be in a gray area. Gray areas in bylaws and policies cost money, um, and we need to get confirmation from legal, we need to figure out where we're going, all of those things. So it's time and it's, and it's legal fees that create issues. Again, as Counselor Hall mentioned, if there is a resident who is concerned, they have recourse of their own to take, and that, whether it be election or recall. If they're not happy with the performance of a particular counselor, um, that, that is in play. And so, um, I've been weighing this back and forth and back and forth, and I am at this point, uh, definitely leading towards removing that from the bylaw as well. Just for the simple fact that we are now in a gray area, uh, bill fifty has created some interesting hurdles, I believe, that we're going to be seeing. Yeah, that's the, I guess that's my two cents. Anybody else? Well, because there is no recourse, and of course, you know, um, like you said, creating an atmosphere where everybody wants to be here is always highly encouraged. And I think if we just, uh, really push forward with that, that'd be a wonderful thing. Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
So if it's the final word, I would say, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I. To me, it's not a great expectation for people to be here. That's, that's over ten percent of the meetings that were, that are held. Just at six. And it would be kind of embarrassing for people to come here, and maybe delegations will outnumber the people sitting around the table. This becomes a matter of convenience for counselors then, as opposed to fulfilling their responsibilities. And, uh, I, I just, I think we owe it to the public to be here, sitting in the chair as often as possible. And I certainly don't see, uh, making it easier to not be here, because then it just becomes a matter of convenience for, for the counselor as opposed to, to making the, the effort to be there. And, uh, it's disrespectful when people come in in delegations and whatever and find there's hardly anybody here. They're all on Zoom. And we've seen what happens when you lose your Zoom connections partway through and you have to leave, because especially in, enclosed, when you can't get audio and, and you don't have the the width, bandwidth, or whatever to, to, uh, to do it. So I, I'd like to see something that doesn't make it limitless as to how many meetings you can attend by Zoom.
Thank you. I, I agree with what you're saying, um, as well. I mean, we're, we're in a situation, um, where we're kind of stuck. So for me, I think that this is definitely a topic that needs to come back, where we remove the gray and we agree, um, yeah, with a consensus on how to move forward with this. And of course, we're going to need legal information, legal as well, when it comes to bill fifty to make some of these decisions. Um, and hopefully those come sooner than later with their regulations and the things that we're looking for. Counselor Mintz?
I'll just chime in here for a second. Thank you for that, uh, Counselor Gerlach, because it's exactly the way I feel. Everybody knows that already. Whether we remove this from the procedural bylaw or not, there's not a lot that anything can happen anyway, so why don't we just go with the first and second reading of of the bylaw and be done with it? Because there's no, there, there's no going back against counselors anymore on, on virtually, the way it sounds like since bill fifty come in. You can just about do what you want and no one can go against you. So, other than ratepayers, I guess. So, so it's, uh, yeah, to even change a bylaws. Why do you want to do that? It's, you can't go against the counselor if, if it came in, so that's my point of view.
Well, thank you, Counselor Gerlach.
Ninety percent of ratepayers out there won't know whether or not counselors are attending or not. They're not, there isn't, everybody isn't just sitting there watching this. Really, really. And, and people do expect that when you run for office like this, that that is your priority. It's, it's not something for your convenience. That is your priority, and you should be here, and I think it shows respect for the people that, that put you here. And by not being here, by doing it at your convenience on Zoom or whatever, it's not showing the respect that the public deserves.
Thank you. And I agree. I, I totally, wholeheartedly agree. Um, I, but I will go back to, is this going to start causing us, costing us legal? To determine if this is a guideline that councils should follow, um, out of respect and whatnot for, for our residents, great. I, I do think it's something we definitely need to revisit, should this be removed from, from, uh, the bylaw. Yeah, we, we have a little bit of work to do, for sure. Go ahead, go ahead.
Could you just say that it's the desired, it's the desired result? It doesn't have repercussions, but it's the desire that you try and limit it to six?
Well, and that's exactly it, you know, as a guideline, like you mentioned, um, that this is what we would like to see. But whether or not we can enforce it is a different story. Yeah. Maybe it's something to include in future lists as the best practice or something like that as well, within those guidelines. And keeping with that in our nomination packages and so on and so forth. Right. No, and I appreciate that. So again, do we remove it? Or do we keep it? Either way, uh, at this point, um, it'd be less work if we just left it there. Less work if we left it there, um, and just have that understanding, um, that we talked about this morning. Is there any? Final?
I will take a final word, and that, that really is, you know, the, the convenience feature, again, I think if you back up and remember, we're, counselors are elected independently. Um, not to, no one is the, there's no supervisor at this table. And, um, I, I would suggest to you that some of it really relates to the bargain you make with the electorate. If you have a really good candidate who, uh, because of whatever circumstances exist in their life, they can, they can be, you know, personally present at half the meetings and are attend electronically at half, but they are committed and engaged. If, if they make that bargain with their, their voters and, and that's, um, how they come to the table. I, I think that's the way democracy works. It seems quite anti-democratic to start looking at trying to restrict how you participate in that way. Now, the best practice idea, that's an internal culture and I don't think you need, you can't, you can't run policy, culture through policy, but you know, we can create an environment and all of us have the, the a role in, in doing that to make it so that people, you know, want to find ways to reorganize the other hurdles that come up to make sure they're, they're here in person, but in an increasingly busy world, there will be plenty of moments where people are away. We've also had, been really fortunate and over the last four years, I've watched lots of, you know, you read the newspaper, there's been a number of councils where people have left because of illness or they've been away because of illness. I don't think it's council's role to tell you, you can't come because you're, you're, you've got some kind of physical issue going on, but you're going to participate remotely while you sort that out. I, I don't want to be in a decision-making chair to, it's not right that they have to come even ask us. They are elected independently to be here and if they need to be away and participate remotely for eight meetings to, to deal with their, their thing, then that's between them and their voters. The other piece again, because we haven't answered this question about how you deal with partial attendance. I can think of moments, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I had a, on behalf of another organization, I'm part of a meeting with a minister. And so I was here for part of the meeting and here for not part of the meeting. But attended remotely. Well, what if that was the eighth time or the seventh time? Does that mean because you're doing this other stuff, you shouldn't be able to participate like? I think again, we have to manage our own schedule. So ultimately, if there's really no consequences, then let's remove the ambiguity and settle on the phrase govern yourself accordingly or appropriately. Like it's up to you to govern your behavior. It's up to you to be accountable for it. It's not up to me to, to police others in this way. So I think taking it out makes it it clear. And again, if there's no, no consequences, remove the ambiguity and, and set the next group up for for, for success without having to deal with, with kind of a hidden landmine like that.
Thank you. All right. So I believe we're going to be looking at the motion that Counselor Hall has asked, and I'll, I'll try and read this again, that bylaw zero, one, two, twenty, twenty-five be amended to delete clause sixteen point four B, which reads, "A member may attend a regular council meeting remotely no more than six times a year unless council approves additional and unless extenuating circumstances require additional remote attendance. And further that the subsequent clauses be relettered accordingly." Does everybody have that? All right. If we're ready to go to, for the question, all those in favor? One, two, three, four?
Aye.
Five? And all those opposed? Sorry, Counselor Kapitania, you're in favor?
Aye.
Yes, and all those opposed? One, two, three, four, that carries five and four. Alrighty. So I believe the next step on this one, just before the, the noon bell is that we have a council to give second reading to bylaw zero, one, two, dash, two, zero, two, five. Will that read now as amended? Yes. Okay. Alrighty. So if we, is there any further discussion on this? Okay. Who would like to give second reading?
I will.
Counselor Cromwell would like to give second reading to bylaw zero, one, two, twenty, twenty-five as amended. If we're ready for that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six and opposed? Two, was that seven and two? You were in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, the next one here is that council give third reading.
Matter of fair, I'd like to table this until administration is able to provide us a printed copy as required by the act. And so hopefully during lunch, we can delete that and see a printed copy on our desks when we get back so we can move on to third reading later today.
Would you like to try that later today or possibly the, is it a panic to have it done right away? We can do it on June twenty-sixth?
I, I don't know. I just don't think, I mean, I'm, I'm going to look at the CIO, but I don't think you can vote third, on a third reading if you haven't seen it in writing.
It says as amended as discussed, but rather than later today and putting that pressure on, on administration, if we would like to table it, it would go until the twenty-sixth.
Is there a tabling motion, ma'am chair?
Okay. So table this is June twenty-sixth satisfactory?
Tabled motion.
I thought we needed to table it for a date, but okay. Table this particular item as per Counselor Cromwell or Counselor Hall, pardon me. All those in favor? One, two, three, four?
Aye.
Five, Counselor Gerlock?
Aye.
Six, seven and opposed? Two, seven and two. We're going to stop for lunch. And that will go until twelve thirty, I believe. Yep, twelve thirty, please.
Well, there we go. Okay. Awesome. Whenever you're ready. We're good to go. Thank you all. We're back from our lunch break. I believe we've lost Councilor Cromwell. Okay. We are at section 7.2 bylaw 013 2025, page 48 of your agenda package. This is a land use bylaw amendment. Ms. Koochay, would you like to speak to it, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair members of council. So this is a request for council to consider second and third reading for bylaw 13 2025. A public hearing was held earlier today for it, and we heard from the landowners, the current landowners. So the proposal is to amend Lot D from the light industrial to Hamlet Residential so they could develop the lot into a residential property. There is an existing, we'll call it like a warehouse style shop that is on the parcel, and the intentions are to use that as a garage and bring in a single family dwelling or construct a single family dwelling on the lot. So administration reviewed it, and it is compatible with adjacent properties that are zoned residential in the area. So our recommendation, if council can consider it, is to have the rezoning passed so they can proceed with the permits to develop it.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hall.
I'd be willing to move second reading, but because I'm guessing the local councillor wants to move third.
All right. We've got all that established. Thank you. All righty. Is there any discussion? Pretty quite a bunch. All right. So Councilor Hall would like to give second reading of bylaw 013. Oh, thank you, Ms. Koochay. Thank you for your information there. Councilor Hall would like to give second reading of bylaw 013 2025, land use bylaw amendment for Block D, Plan 403 ET, within Southwest 1565 22 West to the fourth, from Light Industrial M1 District to Hamlet Residential HR District. If everybody's ready, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reading on Councilor Cromwell. Are you in favor, Councilor Cromwell? Yep. You're in favor?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I believe that's nine and zero. And I believe Councilor Capitanic would like to give third and final reading of bylaw 013 2025.
Yes. Yes, I would like to move that.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's nine and oh. Thank you, everyone. All right. So we moving on to count the item 7.3, and this is bylaw 017 2025. This is a tax penalty special provisions, page 59 of your agenda. And I will turn this over to Ms. McConnell and Ms. Ambly, please.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Awesome. Whenever you're ready. We're good to go. Thank you all. We're back from our lunch break. I believe we've lost Council Cromwell. We are at section seven point two. Bylaw zero one three twenty twenty five, page forty eight of your agenda package. This is a land use bylaw amendment. Ms. Koochay, would you like to speak to it, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair members of council. So this is a request for council to consider second and third reading for bylaw thirteen twenty twenty five. A public hearing was held earlier today for it, and we heard from the the landowners, the current landowners. So the proposal is to amend Lot D from the light industrial to Hamlet Residential so they could develop the lot into a residential property. There is an existing, we'll call it like a warehouse style shop that is on the parcel and the intentions are to use that as a garage and bring in a single family dwelling or construct a single family dwelling on the lot. So administration reviewed it and it is compatible with adjacent properties that are zoned residential in the area. So our recommendation, if council can consider it, is to have the rezoning passed so they can proceed with the permits to develop it.
Thank you very much, Council Hall.
I'd be willing to move second reading, but because I'm guessing the local councillor wants to move third.
All right, we've got all that established. Thank you. Alrighty, is there any discussion? Pretty quiet bunch. Alright, so Council Hall would like to give second reading of bylaw zero one three. Oh, thank you, Ms. Koochay. Thank you for your information there. Council Hall would like to give second reading of bylaw zero one three twenty twenty five. Land use bylaw amendment for Block D, Plan four zero three E T within southwest fifteen sixty five twenty two west of the fourth from Light Industrial M one District to Hamlet Residential H R District. If everybody's ready, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reading on Council Cromwell. Is, are you in favor, Council Cromwell? Yep. You're in favor?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I believe that's nine and zero. And I believe Council Capitanic would like to give third and final reading of bylaw zero one three twenty twenty five. Yes?
Yes, I would like to move that.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank, thank you. That's nine and oh.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, so we moving on to count the item seven point three. And this is bylaw zero one seven twenty twenty five. This is a tax penalty special provisions, page fifty nine of your agenda. And I will turn this over to Ms. McConnell and Ms. Ambly, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. You may recall that on May twenty ninth, you passed a motion for directing administrations to develop bylaws to change the tax payment deadline to October thirty first. So this particular bylaw or the RFD before you and the bylaw attached to it speaks to that. I just want to point out that that the reason that council is doing this, in case anybody's listening to the to the viewing public, is that we've heard from many public members that they're having a difficult time with the increases of the tax rates, mostly because of the changes to assessment and some new development. So the new, the bylaw before you actually amends the bylaw, the current penalty bylaw thirty five dash nine one nine nine five. And essentially, the bylaw removes, this this draft bylaw removes section two of the original bylaw that implements a four percent penalty. So by doing this, that we can just defer the tax payment deadline rather than July thirty first twenty twenty five to October thirty first twenty twenty five as directed by council. And I also just want to mention that the bylaw was viewed, reviewed by our legal counsel.
Fantastic. Pardon me, fantastic. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to help out our residents who are, as you mentioned, having a bit of a difficult time. Council Chamsley?
I'm ready to move.
You would like to do first reading? Alright, Council Hall?
As a correction, I think I heard Director Ambly said, used the phrase increases to tax rates. I don't remember us increasing tax rates. I remember us decreasing tax rates.
Sorry.
There were increases in assessment.
Assessment. Forgive me, assessment. Thank you.
I don't want to take credit for something I didn't do.
And should we say, should we let our residents know as well? I had a conversation last night, but that's for another conversation. Yes, so first reading, if we're ready to go. That, is there any discussion at all on this particular term bylaw that is going to help our residents? Alright, so Council Chamsley would like to give first reading of bylaw zero one seven twenty twenty five as presented. And if we're ready for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you. I believe that's nine and oh and no opposed. And if we would like to go on to second reading, Deputy Reeve Minns would like to give second reading of bylaw zero one seven twenty twenty five as presented. If there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. There's no opposed. And we will have require that before we can go to third and final reading, that there be unanimous consent of all those present. If we can, Council Anderson would like to make that motion. And if we're ready for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Council Cromwell? I missed him. Council Cromwell, I couldn't hear you. Is that the affirmative?
Aye.
Thank you. You're breaking up a little bit there. I believe we have unanimous. I believe we have unanimous consent here for bylaw zero one seven twenty twenty five. Who would like to give third and final reading? I'm sorry, it's like Counselors Capitanic. There you are. Thank you. Counselor Capitanic would like to give third and final reading of bylaw zero one seven twenty twenty five. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I believe that is nine and oh and no opposed. And that passes. Okay, and so our last bylaw for today, zero one eight twenty twenty five. This is again to give some help to our small business. It's a twenty twenty five small business special provisions bylaw. Page ninety four of your agenda package. And again, I will turn this over to Administration Director Ambly, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. This bylaw before you also speaks to the motion that was passed on by council on May twenty ninth to develop bylaws to open up and extend the deadline for small business classification for additional sixty days. This, the small business bylaw zero one two 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 twenty twenty three has a deadline of January thirty first to submit annually to submit the applications for the small business subclass. Through this new bylaw before you, it extends that deadline to August eleventh. So as of today, I guess tomorrow, once the bylaw assigned by the by the Reeve and the C E O, it becomes in effect. And then so we counted the sixty consecutive days and it lands on August eleventh twenty twenty five. Just giving the the small businesses an opportunity to apply. We've heard from some small businesses that they did not apply and we're just, you know, council is offering that opportunity for small businesses to take advantage of this reduced rate.
Thank you very much. And thank you, council, for offering this to our small businesses. As we've heard of, as you mentioned, there's been some difficulty with the raising in assessments and people are looking for that help. So thank you very much for that, council. Is there any discussion amongst council as we're going to be going into first reading? You'll be first? Alright. Council Cromwell?
I, I'm prepared to move first reading.
Okay, I'll put you down for second if that works for you. Alright, so if there's no discussion, Council Hall would like to give first reading. Oh, I'm sorry, was there?
As a, as a, just so I'd like obviously move first reading, but as a discussion item, I think that it makes sense later, once we have a tally on this and after the deadline has closed, to see the budget implications and you know, obviously council needs to provide this direction later, but I think it would be prudent to look at what are we, what are we trimming in the budget to fund this? So while this is important to do, there's not an endless supply of money. We need to make some hard decisions about what things we change, curtail, or amend to to pay for these decisions.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Alrighty, so on first reading, Council Hall would like to give first reading to bylaw zero one eight twenty twenty five as presented. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I don't see any opposed, so that would be nine and oh. Is there discussion around second reading that Council Cromwell would like to move forward with? Alrighty. So on second reading, Council Cromwell would like to give second reading to bylaw zero one eight twenty twenty five as presented. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's nine and oh. We need a motion if we're going to go to third reading for unanimous consent of all those present. Counselor Gerlock? Would like to get to put the motion forward that bylaw zero one eight twenty twenty five, go to third and final reading with unanimous consent of all those present. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Nine and oh and third reading. Counselor Wallack would like to give third reading of bylaw zero one eight twenty twenty five. Third and final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Nine and oh. Thank you. Alrighty. And thank you, administration, for putting together those bylaws and for the work to make all that happen. Appreciate that. Alright, we are moving on to eight point one of our agenda page, one hundred and four of your package. This is the Northeast Alberta E V charging network. It's a memo of understanding. The recommendation here is that council director Reeve Holland to sign the memorandum of understanding is outlined in the terms of reference. Is there discussion? No discussion? Pretty quiet. Okay, I, I, okay, Council Anderson?
Thank you. I noticed in the terms of reference that Athabasca County has two representatives, and I'm just wondering if they both have a seat at the table? Or if we're only being given kind of one vote, per se?
Council Cromwell, are you able to answer that?
Yes, it's a working group. It's not a seat at the table voting membership conglomerate. This is everyone from City of Edmonton up to R M W B with a quite large amount of of members. Town of Athabasca, Elk Point. And so forth, and always trying to attract more. I think this would be something that even Act Dev could continue on their own. Meetings are every two weeks. And right now it is a very high level working group of how might we be able to? And also, I don't know if I'm prepared, if I would be prepared to sign an M O U right now until more information is firmed up. Yeah, I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Council Anderson? Yes?
I don't know if it really answers my question, but it definitely gives me another one. And after hearing what Council Cromwell had to say about it, I'm not sure if this is something that we should be appointing a councillor to versus allowing our economic economic development officer to attend on the county's behalf. So I, I think I also need a little bit more information about it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns I'd like to bring forward? I think that I was in the same frame of mind when it comes to who is going to be looking after the needs of the Community Energy Association. As far as I, you know, we don't have a dedicated E V charging coordinator on staff, so I was curious what type of how many hours that that's going to be, as they mentioned in their providing responses to information requests from C E A that may arise from time to time. I know that that's a concern in other areas that we don't have dedicated staff for or have established level of service. So I'm just, I'm also concerned that without having full information, I'm not prepared to go forward with the signing of the M O U either at this time. But I'll leave that to everyone else. Council Wallack?
I think we're getting ahead of ourselves on some of these issues. It says on the page one oh nine, upon confirmation of sufficient funds, the network implementation of the community will oversee the following. Infrastructure, determine operating maintenance agreements. So they're, they're not going to do anything till they have money and they have stuff in place. Like this is just allowing them to get moving forward. So they're not actually doing anything until they get money. So I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves with with some of these issues.
Thank you. In some ways, I'm glad we're getting a little bit of ahead of ourselves, though, however, just because of the fact we don't know what time commitments that that's going to be. Council Cromwell?
Thank you. It's not that we're allowing them or not allowing them to do anything. They're looking for private funding. They're looking for private land. They want a metaphorical buy-in on discussion and networking and where we can put. And I, I truly believe this could be an active report to their director, which would come into a quarterly report to council right now. I do not see a need for us to continue our time, nor do I see a need to sign an M O U for something that is I, I don't think going to be happening at any time soon, and they don't have enough figured out, in my opinion, to move forward with it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is someone like to own this motion that council director Reeve Holland to sign the M O U? Council Hall?
I would move that motion. You know, Min has proposed a recommendation. And that puts us at the table to have influence and to build relationships and to learn from others. You know, if we read the the decision document, there's no legally binding clauses, no fees associated. You know, there's, it's a chance to to influence and move forward and and be present at the table. And and I think we have to kind of not wait for someone else to do it for us and then show up at the end, but but participate all the way through. So I don't see that there's a lot of downside here. And certainly, you know, the, I think, you know, the act an employee of the C E O's choosing would be a reasonable person to be on the committee, but I, I don't see that there's, there's any downside to to moving ahead with this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alrighty, on the motion that Council Hall would like council to direct Reeve Holland to sign the memorandum of understanding is outlined in the terms of reference. If we're ready for the question, all those in favor? One, two, three. And opposed? One, two, three, four, five. I believe we've lost Council Capitanic, correct? To eight and three, or five and three, pardon me. Thank you. We are moving on to eight point two, which is the Community Assistance Grant, the Athabasca Recreational Trails, page one fourteen of your package. I asked for this actually to be placed on the agenda just for the change in the recommendation to change the word from accepts to receives. And I believe this has already been approved through, the grant has already been approved through administration, if I'm not mistaken. Yes. Alright. So is there discussion on this particular item, or would administration like to provide any further information? Okay? Any discussion? Last call. Alright. The motion? Who's would like, would you, okay, Deputy Reeve Minns would like to move that council receives this report as information regarding the county's contribution of three thousand four hundred sixty six dollars to upgrade surfacing and access points of the Athabasca Landing Trail located northeast thirty two sixty five twenty two west of four. If we're ready for the question, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Oh, is that a yay?
In favor.
Six. All those opposed? Two, six and two. Thank you. On item eight point three. Page one twenty eight of your agenda package. This is the Flat Lake Level Stabilization Dam. There is a recommendation with, oh, I don't think Ryan, he's not here. Would administration like to weigh in on this report at all?
I apologize. None of us have a lot of information on this. Kind of took us all off guard. But the information's there, the background that we were able to back dig up. We're making a recommendation that we do the repairs to the dam structure. There's the ability to put in three stop logs, which basically is about four inches in depth, these logs. And then we can adjust them accordingly. Right now, the dam isn't functioning properly, so we recommend repairs to it. Remove maybe the beaver dam beside it. And then we can operate the logs, block logs as it was intended to and try and maintain a consistent depth to the lake.
Awesome.
Previously, previously was designed to do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Depending on how things go here today, I know some residents who'd be very happy to have that dam back up and running and functioning properly. Is there anybody who'd like, go ahead, Council Anderson?
Thank you. It says the financial, under the financial section, that the cost to repair the weir structure and remove dams is budgeted within the agricultural services budget. I'm just kind of wondering if administration has an estimate as to what this project specifically will cost the county?
I do not at this time, sorry.
Thank you.
Ryan was pretty confident that he could cover it off within his existing budget. That's all I can relate.
And then further to that, are we expecting any increase in maintenance costs going forward? Like to maintain it so we don't have to do a bunch of repairs in the future?
Yeah, I think there would definitely be some administration time associated to it because we're going to have to monitor it now that we're aware of what exists there. You know, I can't speak to what kind of repairs and maintenance bills there would be. I, I can't see them being I I can't see them being an awful lot. Um, it's a pretty stable structure that's there. Um, but you know, sometimes there's the cables and stuff need replaced. So I'm not seeing it being significant, but there will be administration time from uh undertaking inspections and so on.
Thank you. And one more question, have any of the landowners downstream or around Flat Lake been contacted? Other than the uh one landowner that originally filed the complaints?
Um, so as far as I know, there's only been communication with one upstream. We have no intentions of doing anything. Quickly, um, but we'll definitely communicate downstream. Um, but it would be. We we would try and do this in a over time to, so it's not a massive amount of water that is released at once. Uh, and may even have to, you know, carry into next season. So, I mean, the people who've put in the concern, if they're expecting this to be fixed next week, that's not. Going to happen, um, because it would have, would likely, I gotta don't want to say it would have, but it might have uh repercussions for others. So, you know, we're gonna try and get the dam back to functioning the way it was designed to be and uh operated from there on.
Counselor Wallack?
Um, since this is a new project and wasn't budgeted, is this taking away from any other pre-planned projects for the year?
Not that I'm aware of. It sounds like it's not a lot of money to uh to get it back to functioning. And I don't want to throw numbers out there, but it it didn't sound like it was a significant amount of money, so.
I just want to make sure that no other projects are being bumped because this came forward, because there's a lot of other stuff going on that we all know.
If I'm not mistaken, this is a licensed.
It is.
Yeah, and so something like this, it's.
We we need, we need to do something with it.
Oh, of course, but when, you know, we have an obligation, so um those things come in the way. Is there anybody else who would like to? Counselor Paul?
So can you assure us that there's going to be no fines resulting from the government as a result to disturbance of sediment or other? Things in the edge of the lake when we're in there? Because there's a reference here to, you know, pending the water's ability to pass the sediment floodplain. It's possible that you lower the logs and no water will leave, is what I'm reading. Like, we're not going to get into doing something that's.
No.
More to find.
So at that reference is is kind of a, it's a high spot in the lake that has been. I guess we don't have proof it exists, but there's a reference to it from locals. Um, that even, you know, with. The way that the lake has evolved, that it may not function exactly as designed. Uh, anything to do in the water as far as altering that would require all kinds of approvals. And we would be back in front of council before we would undertake anything of that nature. Right now, we're just looking at repairing the dam uh and try and manage the flows. Uh, with the logs that slide in and out. Does that answer your question, Counselor?
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Mintz.
I'll move the recommended motion.
I don't, I just wanted to double check. Counselor Hall, you didn't want that more, okay, good enough, I couldn't remember, so, yeah, there you go. I think if we're done the conversation on this one, we've lost two on screen, alright. So councillor or deputy Reed Minz, I always get it mixed up. The uh would like to direct administration to make repairs to the dam structure and install stop logs. And further to remove stop logs over the remainder of summer to allow water to leave Flat Lake in a controlled fashion. If we're all ready for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Then that's seven and oh, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is on page one thirty of your package, and it is the Multiplex Society AGM Voting Member. Uh, the recommendation here is that council appoint a member of council. As the voting member for the Multiplex Society AGM scheduled for June sixteen twenty twenty-five.
I would uh move that council appoint Counselor Wallack as the voting member.
Okay, Counselor Wallack? Is there any further discussion? Alrighty, so Counselor Hall would like to move that council appoint Counselor Wallack. As the voting member for the Multiplex Society AGM scheduled for June sixteen twenty twenty-five. There's no further discussion, all those in favor? And no opposed, seven and oh, nobody on the screen, thank you. Page one thirty-two of your agenda package was from our delegation this morning of the Athabasca District Chamber of Commerce, I believe. Um, Mr. Gerlock wanted that one on this.
Yeah. I didn't know what was involved in your presentation, so I'll move the recommend recommendation.
Alright, is any other further discussion? Counselor Gerlock would like to receive the Athabasca District Chamber of Commerce presentation for information, all those in favor? And no opposed, seven and oh, thank you. We're going to move now to nine point one A Community Event Calendars, page one thirty-four. Uh, one thirty-five of your agenda package, Counselor Chamsick?
Yeah, I just want to point out uh this weekend coming up is the Boyle Trade Show at the Arena, uh Community Futures Lemonade Day. Um, also on the fourteenth, and in July, uh Fiesta Days from the eleventh to thirteenth.
Uh, in Boyle, sorry, thank you. Slow pitch tournament, so on, so forth. I had my microphone on, sorry. Is there anyone else who would like to add to the calendars, event calendars? No, can we get a motion then to receive the calendars um as amended? Counselor Chamsick would like to make that motion to receive the event calendars as amended, all those in favor? And no opposed, thank you. I believe nine point two are our meeting calendars, they are on page one fifty-six, nine point two of your agenda package. Who would like to begin?
This is Water Services Commission, uh special meeting on the twelfth at, I hope, nine thirty, and um at the town office.
Okay, Water Commission, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to add to this? Alright, um, go ahead, Counselor Mintz.
Good uh Island Lake Waterline uh project uh meeting on the twenty-fifth. For some reason, I got it in here. West of Alberta, yeah.
June twenty-fifth? Waterline?
At eight thirty.
Hey? Is that your only addition?
Uh, yeah.
Case, um, what do we have here? Um, we have tentatively. On June nineteenth, we'll have uh an emergency advisory committee meeting at ten AM. On. The twenty-fifth of June, um, I'll mention it as well in reports, but uh there will be an open house. At the Minook Community Center for the Athabasca Landing Trail Design and Planning. Um, for that section of the trail between Minook and Perry Vale, it's between four and seven. Um, there was also an invitation from the Alberta Healthcare Center for their Indigenous Peoples' Day Ceremony on the twenty-seventh of June. And I was just noticing on July, um, in July nineteen, we have the fly-in barbecue. So, does anybody else? If there's no other further additions to the calendars?
I wonder if uh, do we want to talk about the uh community, the whole meeting on in July?
Okay.
Um, I won't be here for that meeting, and Reeve Holland is going to be away that that time too, so. Don't know if we want to move that meeting, or if we want to. Remove that meeting, or?
Is it a jam-packed agenda already packing up for the, it's not, so we have the option to delete that meeting? How does council feel?
Give me a chance.
Delete?
And she's gone.
She's a thumbs up. Delete? Here nor there, doesn't matter, how do you feel? You're not sure, Counselor Gerlock? It is July fifteen. Many of the whole. There is no agenda that is pressing uh as far as administration can see right now. I guess we are, if if you're not sure, is there a date you would like to propose, and we can sort it out?
Could we possibly wait to cancel it until?
June twenty-six?
After our June Committee of the Whole Meeting and kind of see if there's anything we want to continue discussing then, or if we're okay waiting until August? Because it's hard to decide right now, and we haven't even seen the June agenda, to know if July is going to be jam-packed or not.
Okay. Is that fair?
Don't matter to me.
Okay.
So I know there's uh the, just the two of us aren't going to be here that day, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll make further amendments if we need to on June twenty-sixth on the date, okay? Alright, so if there's no further discussion on these uh council calendars? Meeting calendars, um, would someone would like to make a motion to accept them, uh, thank you, Counselor Chamsick? Would like to make a motion to accept or receive the uh meeting calendars as amended, all those in favor? And no opposed, I don't believe, right, Mr. Gerlock? Okay, thank you. Awesome. This, I think, takes us to reports, and I was just going to give you a quick update. Um, as I mentioned, there's be going to be an open house, um, to discuss the um. Planning and design of that section of the trail between Minook and Perry Vale. Landowners uh have been contacted. And have provided their inputs. There will be a survey that will be coming out as well, um, that's coming forward. There was two more landowners that um, there um, the consultant is having trouble with obtaining their contact information. I don't know if that's something that administration might be able to help with. Um, I don't know what that um, what that would entail. So um, Counselors or CAO Beck with, is that something that the consultant would be able to contact administration to obtain? To landowners uh contact information that are closed?
Um, perhaps uh we can provide them um, things that are not covered by FOIP.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you, I will ask for them to contact. Um, yeah, so that's basically uh the 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 skinny of the update going on. With that particular project, and on the next page, um, the Regional Collaboration uh Community. Um, Regional Community Collaboration, Attraction and Engagement Group. I was wondering if there would be a meeting summary coming out or minutes, and and a meeting summary came out today. Uh, so I forwarded that to all of council um to have a look at, and just briefly. Um, there was a few topics that we talked about, the Northeast Regional EV Charging Network was discussed. Uh, the Wildfire Awareness Day Water Cannon Demonstration on the thirteenth um was brought forward. Uh, also the Explorer uh Inc. High-Speed Internet Project, uh the new potent, there's a new potential housing development projects. That uh you will also um read more about that in the summary. Um, and there's a housing needs assessment that consultant, I think, is starting July first, that is regional. Uh, for that particular project going on there, uh if I'm not mistaken.
Who's behind that?
That, I believe, that was from uh through grant, and that's regional with uh all, both Boyle, uh ourselves and the town.
But who's the sponsor?
I'm sorry?
Who's the sponsor, who's doing it?
I I'm not sure exactly if that was a, what grant that that was through.
Town, town of Athabasca.
Yeah. So there's that one. Uh, we also discussed um, all the the committee members that needed to be at the table. And so there will be a second meeting coming up June nineteenth. Uh, we discussed the uh, to discuss that further, to see where everybody's feeling with that. Uh, we also discussed the Protec DNA as well as uh regional promotion marketing packages. Um, that um, some of the members that were there were very interested in for candidate packages for hiring and that kind of thing. So there's more information you will see on the summary that was emailed today. And I think that's it for reports for everybody, which then moves us into where we enter into closed session. If who would like, Counselor Gerlock would like to move that we move into closed session, all those in favor? No opposed. We are in closed at one, whenever you're ready. We're back, awesome, thank you. We're just coming out of closed session, we have a few motions to make. Uh, Deputy Reed Minz on item thirteen point one would like to direct administration to sign the Community Transportation Agreement. With the town of Athabasca and the village of Boyle. There's no further discussion, all those in favor? It's five, five and oh, thank you. Um, the next item was going to be Counselor Wallack. It's now Counselor Gerlock. And this motion is to, this is item thirteen point two, to direct administration to sign the Regional Healthcare Attraction and Retention Committee. Funding Agreement with the village of Boyle, the town of Athabasca, and the MD of Opportunity. I believe that's all we need there, if all those in favor? That's five and oh, thank you. Um, and Counselor Hall would like to move on thirteen point three to respond to the multiplex funding proposal at the next. Town of Athabasca County, um, Athabasca County IMC meeting as discussed in closed, correct? And all those in favor? And opposed, so it's four and one, thank you. And last item up, Counselor Anderson for thirteen point four. Would like to make the motion that Athabasca County can confirm that it meets the requirements of Canada Rural Transit Solutions Fund Agreement. And that the county's CAO can be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of Athabasca County, all those in favor? Five and oh, thank you very much. I believe our meeting is now adjourned at two four four.